Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come this evening saying thank you. We thank you for today. We thank you for opportunity to approach your throne of grace. God, we pray now that you would just bless this meeting. We thank you for this city of Biloxi. We ask that you allow everything that's on the agenda to edify the citizens and businesses of Biloxi. God, we just thank you for all the leaders of Biloxi and their staff. God, we just love you for this opportunity to come before you tonight. Now bless this meeting that everything will be done to bring you glory. Bless everyone that is here and continue to allow the blessings to flow in the city of Biloxi. We'll be careful to give you all the praise, glory, and honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Leonard, would you lead us in pledge?
[inaudible]
Being that there is a change to the agenda, do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Ms. Lucy, I mean, I'm sorry. Ms. Carey, will you please read those changes?
To the policy agenda, we're substituting item 4B, ordinance to amend the leisure and recreation districts to provide a process for special event permits on the consent agenda to remove item 5C, resolution to approve interlocal agreement with Harrison County, and remove 5D, resolution to approve interlocal agreement with Harrison County for tax assessments.
Thank you. Now do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended? Motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote brings us to the presentation agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. And let me proclaim before I read this proclamation, it's good to be Irish, specifically today. You know, I purchased the 23andMe and the DNA. The only thing I hate is Irish tendencies. That's all you drink and fight. So there must be some Irish in me. Anyway, let me say, this proclamation on behalf of our city and of course, all the citizens that feel the same way we do. For four centuries, Americans of Irish heritage have contributed their lives and fortunes to their adopted country. Whereas the Irish were the largest European group to inhabit the 13 colonies in the 75 years leading up to the 1776 revolution and played a significant role in the war for independence. Whereas Irish Americans have excelled in every facet of life, including education, science, medicine, the arts, and politics. Whereas the Hibernian Marching Society was formed to foster, promote, and perpetuate Irish traditions, heritage, and fellowship of Irish and Irish-American descendants along Mississippi Gulf Coast, and is a viable ethnic organization that contributes and funds to enhance the quality of life. Now therefore, I, Andrew Fofo-Gillich, Mayor of the City of Biloxi hereby proclaim the month of March 2020 as Irish Heritage Month. So I ask-
I'll give you the microphone to do the honors.
Well, Fofo, thank you for being our grand marshal. What, two years ago now? All right. Well, have you ever run your DNA? Because I didn't know I was Irish. And so I ran, I did the 23andMe, and I found out that I'm more than a third Irish. And my husband's been rubbing it into me that I'm not, you know, Irish with that O'Keefe name. So, you know, I was pretty excited to hear that. Well, we want to thank you, but I would also like to introduce our grand marshal, Chuck Kelly, if you could come up here. Now, you know that name Kelly's Irish. And our Colleen, Susan Kane-Henson. And Mayor, will you stand right next to her, Mayor? Will we get a picture? Perfect. Best part about this is there is punch. Sorry, it's not spiked. And cookies in the back, but we're gonna let, we'd like Chuck to say a few words.
Thanks, everybody. Susan, I could not be more happy and honored to serve the Hibernian Marching Society as the 2020 grand marshal. And Colleen, we certainly like to encourage everyone in the community to come out and support all of us as we celebrate our Irish culture and our heritage. Please refer to the Hibernian Marching Society website. We've got several events upcoming, building up to the parade, a luncheon, ball, obviously the parade. So we certainly like to encourage everybody to come out and eat, drink, and be Irish with us. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Are we gonna take a break right now for, is it appropriate to take five minutes and enjoy?
Yes, we're gonna take a five-minute break and have some cookies and punch.
Stop and go to show you. By the way, I'll get y'all a couple more of those.
Unfortunately, we have to get back to business, but y'all feel free to eat some cookies and punch. Mr. Mayor, are you still going with your report?
Yeah, I do have, I'd like to ask the, to spread the expenses of the Biloxi travel credit card to the minutes. And then that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any departmental reports tonight? If not, we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
That was a bringing it up with the mayor. We had a discussion about the two hour parking on Howard Avenue. I know you're looking at that. I know you want to give him some time to put that in. Have you decided about when you would do that, April, May? Put a, to let people know we're gonna do that? Yeah, go ahead. You know, I think we need to do that and just kind of define maybe a few more stripes and those sort of things. And I think we should do that and take probably, you know, the April timeframe. We should be able to notify everyone and do that because it really would help. I think it'd be time to do it because it's getting where you have some retail, you have a few people down there, and during the day, there's a lot of hospital people parking up and down the street. So I think it's time for us to move on to where- I agree. -utilize the park for the business. I agree. And that's whole idea is for their convenience. And we've got plenty of parking, 350 parking places behind, you know, to the north. And I see Sherri Bell. And plans to resurface it too. Excuse me, I said I see Sherri Bell not here, but I was gonna ask you about the Circle Park. It's, we've got anything in order? Are we gonna start working on that? Yeah, I think we talked about that today at the director's meeting about getting some, I guess, some plans with it, you know, what we're gonna actually do to the circle. Now, we're talking to Mike yesterday. Since we're getting ready to do that great boardwalk down there, going to Kensington.
Businessman's Park.
Yeah, I think we need to look at Businessman Park too. Because they're gonna, both of those will be highly used.
On Circle Park, the plans are, as you know, councilman, is $100,000 in the budget for that. The plans are to resurface and restripe the tennis courts, to replace the playground equipment, to do some additional plantings, to get rid of the big tall pine trees and do some additional plantings, and to put a, well, they're gonna restripe it for pickleball and tennis, same courts.
Do we have any plans back on putting lights around there? Bigger lights, not by the tennis courts. I'm talking about the park itself. Something else we could look at, because a lot of them go out there at night, especially during the warmer time of the year. But you have to have lights, not just on the tennis court, on the grounds itself.
During the week, we can sit down with you in engineering and go over the conceptual plans. And actually, we have to get moving, as I told Parks today. If we don't spend this bond money within the covenant periods, and we start earning interest on it, we get in trouble. So we need to get this, this is 2019 bond money. We need to get it spent.
Yeah, just want to make sure we're following up on both of them. And I think the Businessman Park is gonna be big too, something for that. We, once you complete that, it could be neat. So anyway, that's, I was just talking to you about the reflect, and you said you're gonna handle that. I know in Alba Bill, that we have any money where we can pave Alba Bill from the railroad track to the three-way stop sign, the bottom end's gonna be under the construction. And I just didn't know, because that's a, coming out of Keighley Gate, you know, they go down Alba Bill. That's the, that's the main street. And I just think there's a lot of bumped in, you know, there's a couple streets in the area right there that need paving. But I don't know if we have to look at that or make sure we get some money somewhere to get that done.
We'll take a look at that.
All right.
All right. Appreciate it. That's it.
Mr. Guines?
Yes. I want to give kudos and shout out to Sherri Bell for the Black History Program last week. That was one of the best that I've seen in a long, long time. So kudos to her. Kudos to the mayor coming out speaking even wearing a dashiki. So I thought that was hilarious.
I have it.
I wanted to also talk a little bit about the homeless issue. On Calvet and Division Street, some of our residents have been calling in. So that's something that we may want to just start looking at and addressing those, that homeless issue out there. And of course, I want to stay on top of the infrastructure issues and just do the bi-weekly meetings after the director's meeting on Monday. So I want to schedule that after that with the Mike Leonard and you, the mayor. That concludes my comments.
Mr. Demming?
I don't have much, but if I could get an update on our paving projects in Ward 4, I think we, did we not send them out together?
My head of engineering is at home repairing her house after a fire. However, the good news is that we've awarding the contract for the, you remember, the problem we had, councilman, with most of the streets in your ward did not require milling and replacement. They required sealing and restriping, which would give us another 10 years on the same pavement. But we didn't have a contractor willing to do that. Pay for worn paving and land shapers and all the rest of the guys that we, they were into milling and replacing. It was gonna be more expensive than necessary. We can do a lot more streets. So we've just put out a bid, open bids have an apparent low bidder, or in the process, probably at your next council meeting, we'll award the contract for that paving. And he's got, and we've got a long list, including a lot of Ward 4 paving for them to get started.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, I wanted to thank Mr. Leonard, Mr. Creel, Mr., I guess it's Captain Brumley, Lieutenant Moran, thinking, who did I forget? We had Kevin Coggan was there. There was somebody else, Christie Kelly Hicks. Thank them for coming to the ward meeting and speaking on various topics. And Mr. Leonard did double duty. Not only did he make his own personal comments, and I assume those of the mayor, but he also filled in for the city engineer, who was, and did a good job. And he was a good sport about things. So I wanted to thank those individuals. The next thing is, I just wanted to check, Mr. Abyd, on this tree mitigation bank that was mentioned at the last council meeting. I just want to be sure we don't forget about that move forward to include somewhere in there that some of those funds might be used for irrigation purposes. It's not enough, I think, just to have the trees so much as it is in some areas. They're gonna need irrigation, so forth.
We should have a draft by the next meeting, I think. Circle like that.
I will hardly sleep tonight. Thank you, sir.
We got two weeks and St. Patrick's Day.
That's good. Okay. That's a, I feel greener already. No pun intended. The last thing is, Mr. Leonard, just wanted to check on the wellness show, the road show. We're, again, we're looking at getting folks involved. And I know you've been looking at that. We hadn't gotten it off the ground yet, but I'd like to be invited. We need to get busy on that and to allow us to collect some data. And the more monthly data we can accumulate, the better will be served when we're looking at making decisions at budget time here in a few months. So just let me know. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Mr. Glavin?
Yeah, I just have a couple things from the O'Glavin report today. First of all, I just want to talk about a development that's in Ward 6, and it's off of Pops Ferry Road called Camp David, not to be confused with Rusty David's pier and boat and all that good stuff. But gentleman is Mark Parish. I got an opportunity to tour the facility today. Development is coming along nicely. It's gonna have 72 RV pads and a clubhouse and nice pool area and places for folks on the river to pull up to this facility and really enjoy it. So hats off to his entrepreneurship and what he's trying to develop there. It's really something to behold. And also, in the same vein, I'll be having a Ward 6 Town Hall meeting on Monday, March 16th. Camp David will be one of the keynote speakers with Mr. Parish, talking about that development, along with the Blake that's scheduled to open later this fall, which is an upscale retirement community. So real, real happy with that. It's gonna be at the Innovation Center, Monday, March 16th, at 5:30. And my wife will be hard at work the night before, making pusheradas. That's a little incentive to get folks there. So we'll probably have a pretty good turnout. Yeah, George is coming now. So I also want to give a shout out, I mentioned this to Vincent, our public relations person, Jeffrey Compton, who has some Biloxi roots. His dad is Scott Compton. And Scott, his mother was Gloria Compton. Her, along with her brother Ed Bozier, used to run the Hook Line &amp; Sinkers seafood restaurant on the beach. Jeffrey's cousin, once removed, is Mickey McElroy, of course, who runs McElroy's Harbor House and McElroy's on the bayou. But Jeffrey is going to be competing on the Food Network in the Vegas Chef Prize Fight. And the winner of that contest will be running a $10 million restaurant in Vegas. But it airs this coming Thursday night. There's eight finalists. And so we got somebody with Biloxi roots that'll be competing for that. So tune in if you want to kind of pull for somebody with our Biloxi roots. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
I have reports.
Okay. Ward 3 is gonna be having a ward meeting in April, so we look forward to that. You're probably gonna need to come out there, Mr. Sifel. And also, I want to reiterate, since this 2020, how important it is. Spread the word. Make sure everyone fills that out. Because if anyone's missed, one person's missed, it's about $50,000 that we're gonna be missing in state funds. So make sure to spread the word. And we'll move on to public agenda, where we have citizen comments. Each person is allotted three minutes each to speak with a total time allotted of 45 minutes. Once you reach the desk, please state your name and address, as well as stated aloud for the record. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to come up? Sure, come on.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Jeremy Isler. I'm a resident of Ocean Springs, but I work in Biloxi. And my wife runs Moore Community House in Biloxi. And I'm here to speak to item 5A on the agenda, which is, as I understand it, I believe $45,000 has been requested in funding by CTA. I am all in favor of CTA. I think public transportation is wonderful. But what I wanted to make the board aware of is the fact that all of the social service agencies in, pretty mu, in Harrison County, that residents of Biloxi need to access to get benefits like TANF, child support certificates, child support enforcement, the Wynn Job Center, where they go to apply for jobs and to get job training. They're all located on Seaway Road in Harrison County. Seaway Road is 3.5 miles long, and it's not, unless something has changed since the last time I checked, it is not on a bus route. So if you are someone who needs those services, which means you're poor, it means you're probably a single parent, head of household, which means you're probably a woman. And in Harrison County, according to the statistics that I viewed, it means that you're probably African American. You certainly have less access to a car if you're African American, according to the American Community Survey. You can't get there. There's no sidewalk on Seaway Road. So if you decide you want to walk from the nearest bus stop, which is, I think, approximately four miles away, it's on Three Rivers Road. Seaway's 3.5 miles long. If you want to walk to get to any of those benefits, you're putting your life at risk. If you want to pay for an Uber, I'm sure everyone here has used Uber. It's not cheap. And if you're someone who isn't receiving TANF because they can't get there, you're not likely to have the money for an Uber. I point this out to you because I think it's a matter of concern to any fair-minded person, and I know you all are fair-minded people. But also, the city of Biloxi is a recipient of HUD funds, significant HUD funds. And when a city is a recipient of HUD funds, there are certain obligations that come along with that. Pardon me. So HUD has stated that program participants that receive assistance from HUD must not just refrain from discrimination, but take actions to undo historic patterns of segregation and afford access to opportunity. And according to HUD, this includes addressing housing-related barriers in access to education, employment, transportation, and jobs, among others. And that is because HUD wants people to be able to have decent lives and move into higher opportunity zones. And how are you gonna do that if you can't get access to job training, or job applications, or job searches, or child support enforcement, or TANF? And right now, you can't do that if you're a poor person. So I would encourage you to support CTA, but I also would encourage you to condition that support on CTA establishing a shuttle. I mean, it could be an on-demand shuttle for people who need to access those services from the closest bus stop, or it could be a regular shuttle. Or they could simply add a bus route. I'm not a transportation planner. But I think that equity, fairness, and also the city's obligations under, as a recipient of HUD money, means that this council needs to take some steps to ensure that people can access those services. And right now, there's no way for them to do that. You know, perhaps you could take a portion of the funds-
I'm sorry, you're piling this up, sir.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Otherwise, my time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on my left, your right? Anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my right, your left?
Good evening, y'all. I'm Sarah Ruskey from the Harrison County Library System. My home address is 980 Courthouse Road in Gulfport. But as you know, the library serve all of the county, all of Harrison County. And I'm coming today, when, if you may remember, back when we gave our budget request in August, September, you were able to grant a portion of what we asked for to help fund a computer, really large computer replacement program that we're doing. And you told us to come back about six months later, so I'm doing that. I'm here with Tara Morgan, who's the manager of the Margaret Sherry branch, and Dave Vincent, who's the chair of our Board of Trustees, to make that request to you. I just want to recap quickly. We were starting with 68 computers that we have in all the branches in Biloxi. They're running Windows 7, which is no longer supported. So it's a risk, a security risk and functionality problem. Many of them are eight years old. We were able, with the money that you gave us last year, which was $12,000, to, combined with some additional system funds, we replaced 17 computers. That leaves us, this doesn't include monitors or any of our laptops that we use for labs and classes. That leaves us with 51 desktops. And that leaves us, after the funds that you gave us this fiscal year, and a donation, a $10,000 donation from our Biloxi friends of the library, that leaves us with a deficit of $23,534. And so we're here to ask if you can help us fill that gap. And I know that that's maybe a large gap, but we're back following your instructions, and we hope you can help us a little bit with that. So if you have any questions, I have a handout if- questions, I have a handout if you'd like to see the items in detail. And of course, I'm able to email it to you as well.
Would you like that handout on the record? You give it to the clerk. Anyone have any questions? Thank you, dear.
Yeah. I do have a question. Just to be clear, in order to finish replacing the PCs that you have, it would take $23,000? And those PCs would all be placed in libraries in Biloxi?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, dear. Anyone else on my right, your left?
Kevin Coggan, Coast Transit Authority, I want to address Mr. Isler's comments about the service to the social service agencies on the Seaway Road. We discontinued service out there about three years ago because of very low ridership. And we moved that service out on Dido Road, and the ridership picked up about 300%. I have met personally with a group of the, working group of the agencies out there to come up with a solution, identify exactly what their needs are, and come up with a solution. And what we came up with, and what CTA is proposing to do, is create a shuttle service on Mondays to connect the Gulfport Transit Center, which connects with all of the fixed route bus service on the entire Gulf Coast, so people could get there. And as you well know, it takes local money with federal dollars. There is no 100% federal money for transportation. So if I can find, acquire $18,000 a year, I can run a bus out there, once a week on a Monday, and serve all those agencies out there. That service is in Gulfport, by the way, it's not in the city of Biloxi. Certainly, Biloxi residents would need to use it. So all of the agencies out there, and all the money that's spent, we can't seem to come up with $18,000 a year to serve the unmet needs of their clients. So I just wanted to let you know that we're working on this. We have a solution. And I'm continuing to work on funding for it. I don't think the local government should pay for it. The state agencies get a lot of federal money that they can use for transportation. They just choose not to put the money up to serve their clients. I also will say, when I met with them, I asked them to identify to me how many of their clients from each agency was not able to access their service because of lack of transportation. Nobody from a single agency could give me an answer. So it's not as big a problem as it might be perceived to be. It's certainly a problem for people that need it and don't have access to it. But I just wanted to point out to you that we're aware of it, we're working on it, and I will continue to work on it at the state level, to see if we can come up with the local match for the federal money to do it. I don't think you all should be paying that. I think the state agency should be paying that. It's not a lot of money, and it's for their client. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right, your left? Anyone in the back? Okay. Citizen comments are now closed. Move on to the policy agenda.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment from their present zoning district classification of LB business to neighborhood business for property located at 2560 and 2598 Pass Road.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale. Second by Mr. Barrett. Being a first reading, we'll move on to ordinance B.
Ordinance to amend Section 13148-1 Leisure Recreation Districts to provide a process for special event permits.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Tisdale. Being also a first reading, we'll move on to ordinance C.
Ordinance to amend the land development code, Section 2367C4, to address fences and easements.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Being a first reading, we'll move on to Resolution D.
Resolution to appoint a president to the Biloxi City Council.
Do you have a motion? You want to get rid of me? Okay. Mr. Guy.
I'll second that.
Funny. Second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Congratulations. Welcome.
Don't cheer or anything.
It was all the cheers, that was the crowd.
I get that. So we'll move to Resolution E.
Resolution to appoint a vice president to the Biloxi City Council.
I'll move it. Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously? Now they can't see me. Resolution F?
Resolution to grant conditional use approval for an indoor firing range for property located at 8489 West Oaklawn Road.
I'll move it. Second.
Moved by Councilman Barrett, seconded by Councilman Glavine. Do we have any discussion? Councilman Barrett?
None.
Glavine?
Well, I mean, if we're throwing axes, we might as well have a firing range, too, or, you know, a firing squad, so. No, I have nothing.
Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I attended the planning commission meeting. The applicant did a really, really good job of explaining the technology that's involved and what their plans were for this facility. And as I recall, Chief Miller spoke in favor of it, and this helps us. We don't have a firing range, I don't believe, in the city of Biloxi. And it was, I just thought it was well thought out, well planned, a lot of safety features. As I recall, and Mr. Creel may correct me, but I don't think we had anybody speak against it. The only question was, how much noise is he going to make if you live across the street? And as I recall, less noise than the cheering that occurred for Mr. Deming a moment ago. So anyway, I would urge my colleagues to support it. Thank you.
Just so you're aware, I do own an AR-15, and I will be shooting it at the range. Anybody else?
You want to take Dr. Tisdale with you?
That was the implication.
I talked to Chief Miller, and when he supports something this much, that's a good thing. He told me behind this, he says, "A lot of good things going to come out of it, a lot of training sessions." So it's going to be good for the citizens in the city of Biloxi. It's a good thing. Thank you.
There being no more discussion, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Move to the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Seconded, moved by Paul Tisdale, seconded by Dixie Newman. I'll start at the Ward One.
My first one was A. I know this comes up again. It seemed like we just went through this a couple of weeks ago. And I think Kenny Glavine asked the right questions. He said, "Can we raise the fare?" And they said they couldn't. Did the fuel hazard anything to do it? They said it didn't. They said, "We're going to chop that one route down to two days, pretty much save the $40,000, $45,000." And when I left that meeting, I thought that we pretty much agreed on. So I don't really know why this is back on the table again. This should all be done at budget time. This is not budgeted. Is that correct, Mike? There's no $45,000 budgeted anywhere in our budget for this.
The administration recommended $333,000. The council approved $288,000.
Right. And we already put that into effect. So this has nothing to do with this $45,000, correct?
The difference is 45.
This additional $45,000.
At least that's the way I was, my math was taught to me.
Say again?
That's the way Brother Placid has taught me.
That's Brother Placid, yeah. But anyway, so I just don't think, I think this should be brought back up when budget time, in August, when we do our budget, and put it on the table. I don't want to cut the route of how many people it actually affected. Did it really change a whole lot of stuff? And then you look at that. And if you have to do it then, at that time, you put the money back into the budget to run that route. But right now, from the last meeting, we pretty much said we weren't going to do that until budget time.
Councilman Gines?
I didn't look anywhere else. I was just trying to get that one done.
Well, let's handle A, since it's on the table. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at A. And I'm like George, I have a problem with A. Just a blatant 45. It kind of caught me off guard, seeing this on the agenda. I thought we had a resolution before, and just to toss it up this quick, it's kind of shocking. And I can remember a couple of years ago, when we approved some money, and we ended up getting a route cut. And I'm just not ready for this right now. I think we need to take this into more discussion before we move this forward. Thank you.
Ms. Newman?
I don't have a problem with funding CTA. We had the discussion at budget time, and it was said that we'll wait a couple of months and look back at the issue. And now we're here. And, you know, the threat of losing service for our citizens, of course, which we're supposed to provide these services, I'm all for making sure that they are still attacked.
Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, thank you. As I recall, there were two entities that the council, when we approved the budget and after some discussion, we said, "Come back to us in six, five or six months, and let's see where we are budget-wise, see what's happening with the revenue." Correct me if I'm wrong, but gaming revenue is up? I don't know what, I don't know what would be significant. I don't know exactly how much it's up, but is it up tens of thousands of dollars?
Yeah. We're about $400,000 over budget year-over-year. Reflect on sales tax year-over-year.
Okay, so we're up $400,000, we think, for the year, just for this year at this point?
At this point, year-over-year.
Okay, so we have $400,000 more than we anticipated from gaming, correct?
At this point, yes.
That's, that's true. The other thing is, I was looking at the energy cost. I just tracked that stuff for several years. And this year, we're running an average of, according to my figures, about, which come from the docket, we're about $20,000 per month on average below where we were in last fiscal year. And again, you don't know what the next six months is going to hold. But the fact of the matter is, we look to be about $100,000, $120,000 ahead on energy, based on last year's docket. And the, if the gaming revenue is up, based on what we told not only the library, but CTA, was that if the money's there, if the money's there, and it appears to be there, then let's, let's look at CTA. The difference, as I recall, was the operating cost per hour. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Coggan. I think it increased a couple of dollars per hour, as I recall. Again, the rest of the world, costs increase, and folks demand a little more money for their budgets in order to maintain those same services. We do a very, very good job in the city. Our millage is not increased. I keep alluding to that, that it's, and I think one of my councilmen mentioned some months ago at budget time, that perhaps the city should look at investing in their infrastructure, investing in some of the services. And what that might well mean would be a millage increase. That's just my personal thought in the middle of a budget year. But having said that, is the money there to fund the request in its entirety at this point in time? It is. If we want to fund a portion of that $45,000 increase, it really doesn't help with the beachcomber line, because to maintain that line six days a week, that route six days a week, it's going to take $45,000 to do that. So the alternative is, don't give them a penny more, cut that service from six days a week to two days a week. So all the folks, however many that may be, and Mr. Isler's point is well taken, including some of those who don't have transportation or can't afford it, have to go up and down Highway 90, no longer have a way to get up and down Highway 90 to get to work. Could be a couple of hundred folks. I'm not that familiar with the data. But what I do know is, it looks like if there's not enough support tonight, that that route is going to be cut from six days to two days. Any tourists who are in the area that like to make it to a casino, they won't be riding the beachcomber. Folks who work and have to get to work from one end of town to the other, they don't have any alternate transportation. And I'm assuming if they did, they would be using it if it was at little or no cost, will no longer have that route available to them. Now, they, I guess in, I don't want to put this. Regarding the library, I'll just say one thing, two things, really. One is, our citizens deserve technology that makes all those services online available to them. They should have hardware that, in my opinion, shouldn't be more than five or six years old, at the very least. I believe we heard eight years old. I mean, I'm getting notices on my computer already that Windows 10 is fixing not to be supported anymore. So these are all issues that the citizens of Biloxi, and whatever money we might make available to them. And I urge my council, my fellow council members on this side to be thinking about this, and that I may be looking at a resolution at the next council meeting to bring this issue up. But the reason this has come back again, CTA, and I'll finish, is that we told Mr. Coggan to come back, and let's see what our financial situation is in the middle of the year. We had some discussion, I think, a week or two ago. Nothing was resolved. It was just discussed. But here we are today. So let's fish or cut bait, understanding what the ramifications are if you don't want to fish. Thank you.
Councilman Glavine?
I'm going to have some questions for Mr. Coggan, so I'd ask you to come up to the front, if you don't mind. But I'll make some opening remarks as well. Councilman Lawrence is correct that, you know, we had a discussion on this earlier. You answered the questions honestly, in terms of your fuel cost, in terms of the fare increases, if we had that opportunity, and, you know, what you could, what you could do. Councilman Tisdale brought forth this resolution today, because we did pledge that we would look at it, knowing that we are a tourism community, and we depend on those routes to transport people from Gulfport to Biloxi, to DeIberville, and back through those cities and portals as well. So we have a responsibility, you know, to our budget and the funds that we have available, to be able to spend those wisely in our community, for our community. And I think that's why we're here today. It looks positive with the gaming revenues, but those are not certain. And we want to work with you. We want to work with CTA to see what that balance is. Is it $45,000? That's what you're telling us, that the number's $45,000, to continue the route. So we got council members up here that either have to make a decision today. I mean, if we need a little bit more dialogue, and if you could provide that timeframe for us, you know, perhaps we table this so that everybody's comfortable with this decision we're going to make, either up or down. Councilman Gines said he was caught off guard. He didn't know it was going to be placed, you know, this hastily on the agenda, and I can, I can respect that, and that people may need a little bit more time. And then if that number is firmly $45,000, you know, we certainly got to know that. If it's a lesser amount, it would be beneficial for us to know that as well. So it's tough when you talk about cutting services- So it's tough when you talk about cutting services, that beach combers along that lifeblood, you know, highway that moves people to a lot of different tourist destination, people that have jobs, you know, the people that have, you know, depend on it for their recreation and quality of life and, you know, so this is a pretty, pretty big decision, you know, today. So I'd ask you for some of your feedback, listening to some of our comments today. Do you have any alternative or recourse?
So, so a few things. I was here for the budget workshops and then I've been here several times since then. Initially, we were invited to come back in six months in March after you approved the budget and then that was changed earlier to January. And I tried to get on the agenda for a January meeting and this is March. So it's been six months and we've been paying for the shortage out of our reserves. All the other cities we serve fully fund what we ask for this year. There's no shortage of funding. It's, you're paying eighteen percent of the operating cost is what we ask you to pay for the service we provide for the city of Biloxi. That's a very, very low number regionally. In the southeast region, it's over fifty percent. Cities pay over fifty percent of the operating cost. Our consumers pay a much higher percentage of the operating cost than other transits do because they pay fair zones. They don't get free transfers or reduced transfers. So they're paying a dollar fifty every zone they cross. So their percentage, the consumer pays of the operating cost, they're bearing a higher burden. We go out and try and get as much state money and as much federal money as we can to operate your system. We just bought two brand-new trolleys, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. We're totally federal and state money that we didn't ask local governments for. There's forty, you know, we need forty-five thousand dollars to balance the budget. We don't have any more time to wait. I can't go back to my board. You know, we were asked to come back in January and this is March. My board is waiting to hear back from me on what your decision is and we can't keep delaying it and putting it off to the next budget cycle. CTA cannot continue to spend out of our cash reserves to subsidize the local operating shortfall when all the other cities, Gulfport, DeIrbville and Ocean Springs is paying what we asked and we asked them for more, just like we asked you for more, and they all paid more this year. So we do have to be equitable and we do have an equitable formula on what we ask for. It's all based on service hours. So I'm asking you tonight to vote and decide what you want to do with it. And I'd be happy to answer any more questions anybody may have.
I'd like to ask a question.
Let us get down the panel first. Nathan?
I have a question for Mike. So we're five full months in to this year's budget, correct? And so, right now, we're projecting four hundred just from gaming in addition to what we budgeted.
But keep in mind that the budget, as approved, starts with eight million dollars in cash and ends up with four million dollars in cash. So we're budgeting to lose four million dollars.
So.
Sorry, that's just.
Yeah, I understand. So right now, five months in at four hundred thousand, so we're basically about a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and eighty to the good on gaming at this point, is that correct?
Correct.
And what's the number again that the library was asking for in addition?
Twenty-five, so. Did we say zero?
Twenty-three, five? Mr. Coggan, on those two routes, do y'all have a breakdown of the amount of people on the days that we would be cutting that ride those? Do you have that available?
The beach comber route runs, there's two trolleys. They run Biloxi-Gulfport and it carries about a hundred and ten thousand a year. So Biloxi's half is fifty-five. So reducing four, from six to four, to two days, eliminating four days, is going to eliminate thirty-five thousand riders a year approximately. You'll never know till you implement it. And about thirty percent of overall ridership is workers. You know, we have a lot of low-income workers in our community and they depend on that to get to work. One big thing that Coast Transit Authority offers to employees and employers is low-cost transportation allows them to make their household budgets work with transportation. If you have two wage earners in a house, you only need one car. The other person can take transit very cheap. You can ride all month to work for fifty dollars and do your other business as well too. So it's a great benefit to the employees and the employers. So eliminating four days a week, you're talking about.
Thirty-five thousand.
A thousand rides a year in Biloxi.
And most of those are workers?
Thirty percent of the thirty-five thousand would be approximately, it's not precise, would be workers.
And do you know approximately what percentage of that would be tourists?
On that route, I would have to say probably twenty, twenty-five percent tourists.
Okay, so between workers and tourists.
There's not as many tourists on that route as there is the casino hopper.
Yeah.
They don't get off the casino hopper and go on the beach comber very much, but we still, you would be cutting businesses off from tourists wanting to go down to, you know, to the west outside of the casino hopper.
So on this route, they go into Gulfport as well. So the forty-five thousand that isn't to make, so Gulfport is actually paid on these routes as well. So if they were cut from four to six, Gulfport would be cut on some of this as well, right?
No, Gulfport is paid for their service. Their service would be maintained. There would be a trolley running from the Gulfport Transit Center downtown Gulfport to Edgewater Mall. There would not be a trolley four days a week going from Biloxi to Edgewater. You would not be able to get to Edgewater.
But that's what I'm saying. So those people that Gulfport have paid to get to those casinos or wherever in Biloxi would no longer be available to them four days a week?
The Gulfport service would be intact. It would continue to run.
Okay, so what, what, what effect?
There are two trolleys and they run a continuous loop. What we would do, four days a week, we would just bounce one trolley back and forth between Biloxi and Gulfport. And Friday and Saturday, the two trolleys would make the continual loop down into Biloxi.
Okay, so only one trolley would be cut, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's two trolleys. There would be, there would be no trolley service in Biloxi Monday through Thursday.
Okay, all right, that's all I have.
Between Edgewater Mall and downtown Biloxi.
All right, that's all I have.
You said if we cut that down, it would reduce the ridership to thirty, we'd lose thirty-five thousand riders.
Yes.
What are the riders, what's the ridership on that? On that route in general? If we're, if we're cutting it down for.
Biloxi route is two trolleys that run between Biloxi and Gulfport.
I get, I get that, but you gave me, you gave.
Ridership for both is a hundred and ten thousand.
So we.
Biloxi's half is fifty-five thousand.
Have we ever considered increasing the fare? Instead of increasing the cost on us, raising it by fifty cents would pay for this?
When we go up on fares, we have to go up on fares system-wide. We can't have a higher fare in Biloxi than we do anywhere else. And I don't think we have a city that has that.
Would you do that next budget cycle? Would you consider a fare increase next budget cycle?
Excuse me?
Would you consider a fare increase next budget cycle?
We, we, we look at a fare increase every budget cycle. We consider that, yes, we do.
Last, last time you testified that it's been a long time since you went up on the fare.
It's been several years.
Yep, okay, sorry.
No, that's a valid point, thank you. My concern is you have to balance your budget. We have to balance our budget. Now, I know Dr. Tisdale pointed out some savings and some earnings that we've created this year, but if you'll remember, we passed a deficit budget of four million dollars. So whatever we've generated hasn't, if it hasn't increased, if we haven't generated more than four million dollars, we're still losing money this year. There's no way to get around that. We are working on a savings of eight million at the beginning of the year, projected at four million at the end of next year. If we continue this path, at the end of next year, we have nothing in savings. Two years from now, we're in the whole four million dollars. So we can't pass out more money just because we're doing a little better on gaming revenue. And I, I'm sorry, I hate that, but just being a fiscally responsible person, if we're in the whole four million dollars, we made this cut for a reason. We have to start trimming fat from a lot of places. Do we have an updated balance sheet showing us where we are with our expenditures? I know we have some savings on, on, I mean, we have some revenue generated through gaming and some savings from, from our cutback on power consumption, but where are we at on the balance sheet as a whole?
Well, again, the projection was that your budget is different by four million. You got more revenue, more expenses than you have budgeted revenue by four million. Right now, the actuals versus, actual revenue versus actual expenses shows about three-point four, I think, year-to-date gain or loss. But that's, that's actual and it does depend, I mean, it's a moving target.
Right, but we can project.
And even these figures, I think we're about two percent up in gaming revenue year-to-date. But, you know, it depends on when they reported on, so, I mean, it's a dynamic issue too. But I think we're about two percent gaining in that deal, but, you know, it's going to go away in a heartbeat.
Right, so we're nowhere near getting to a neutral ins and outs.
Right.
I'm sorry, at this time, I know we told you to come back in six months, but I don't believe that we do have the available revenue. We don't have earnings yet. We just have money that we're trying to recover from what we plan to expand on different things. But that's my position. George, you had some further comments?
I was going to ask you about, you said something about a route going to DeIrbville. You take our people and bring them to DeIrbville? How many people you bring from DeIrbville to Biloxi? I know we seem to be sending everybody to promenade. I said, we seem to be sending a lot of people to promenade. I just wonder how many, that's not tax money going to DeIrbville. How much they pay? They don't pay that much. They don't pay nothing like what we paying, that's for sure. I'm talking about money-wise. Well, now, now, we're carrying so many people to work. That's living at DeIrbville and St. Martin, at the IP Casino, that we had to take the small bus off and put a big bus on. People coming to work in IP Casino. They're using migrant workers to support their business. And now they've got so many, they keep building up their workforce. Now they've got so many, we're fixing to put another bus on and keep commute times for work to get them to the IP Casino. That's benefiting Biloxi. We're bringing, we're bringing people in DeIrbville, a lot of people to work every day at the IP Casino. I mean, that works both ways. We send the same people to DeIrbville to the promenade.
Out there, we can't, I mean, it's a, it's a connectivity throughout the whole system.
Kevin, what's? What's the system-wide ridership? What is that total number?
System-wide ridership is, right now, fixed route ridership is probably about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand a year.
Yeah. Paul, did you have any?
Yeah, let's talk about budgets just for a moment. We adopted a budget this year and. Right. First, first of all, I want to make it clear, I think the mayor and the administration has done a very good job budgeting. I want to say that upfront. And if I have to repeat it at the end, you'd nudge me and I'll repeat it again, okay? But now, let's talk about past budgets. This year, we said that we're going to start the year with eight million in fund balance, basically. Okay. Cash on hand, that's right. You like cash, you're a cash man. Eight million in cash and we're going to finish, we project with four million in cash. Lot of ifs, lot, lot of ifs. All right, we know, we know it's a planning tool and all that. What I'm getting at is, most of us here, five of us anyway, have been on the council now, this is the seventh year, and I think of those seven years, I may be off by one, but I think four or five of those years, we adopted a budget based on projected revenue of X and expenditures of X plus something else. And I, I think we, we adopted a similar budget last year, the previous fiscal year, and, and due to good management by the mayor and the administration, even though what we budgeted had us losing, we ended up picking up a, what, a million, million and a half more than we thought we would.
And the number, the number the mayor quoted recent, just a minute ago, was that we are now sitting at negative two and a half, meaning we started at negative four and we're clawing our way back towards even.
I understand that, but, but also, if I remember correctly, we were in similar circumstances but managed to finish a million and a half better than we thought we would, which maybe meant what we weren't, we didn't finish as deep in the hole as we thought we were. It's another way to look at it. But, but my point, but my point is this, and I'm no economist, but, so maybe my, my reasoning is flawed. My experience is that regardless of the budget and regardless of what we say we're going to take in or what we're going to spend, the folks who apply the brakes to be sure we don't go over the cliff every year is the mayor and the administration. Is that accurate? Okay. Now, that having been said, cash on hand, this is a cash man, he watches it, he can tell you from week to week, God bless you. Or as those good Catholics would say, God bless you. Okay? My point is here, we're up, you can take that money that's saved, we'll spend it on something else, all right? Or it'll lend up cash on hand at the end of the year. In fact, we may have more cash on, we might have more cash on hand ending this year than we did the previous fiscal year regardless of what our, what our budgeted figures were, correct? That's why I asked, how far were we ahead in terms of cash on gaming? We're up a little bit. The trend is, looking back over the past three or four years, the total from all the casinos has increased every year, all right? And we expect it to increase again this year. I can't remember if we budgeted an increase in gaming revenue or not. Usually, we're conservative.
Slight increase.
But I also know we budget conservatively, thanks to Mr. McEwen, wherever he is with the administration. So having said all that, I find it hard to believe that we can't, if we, if we really want to fund this route, and that's what it comes down to, do we really want to fund this route? The money's there, the cash is there at this point in time to fund CTA for that route? That's, and from my view, that's the fact of the matter. Do you just?
No, I don't. I mean, we can find forty-five thousand for this project as well as other things that we, what we need. The question is.
Exactly.
And, you know, and let me, let me say this about the last three years, we were very, very close on revenues, on budgeting to actual, very, within two percent, I believe, right? Expenses, we stepped on brakes and not filled things, so we were actually under the budgetary, you know, the expense part of the deal. And we expect to do a similar thing when we see things happening. So, I mean, if you ask me a question, in my honest opinion, we can find forty-five thousand, okay? But, but we may have to be finding other things as we, you know, as we roll right along in what the president was saying, yeah.
That's exactly my point. We can, if we spend whatever he calls savings, we're still, we're still in the negative, we're still down. Let me finish, Mr. Mayor. You said we're clawing our way back up, we're two and a half down. We projected negative four, we're two and a half, still away two and a half. So it's not savings, it's not earnings yet. If we spend it on this, we have to spend it on something we already planned to spend it on, or we have to find money from somewhere else. So this isn't a matter of, do we want to fund it? Of course we want to fund it. It's a matter of, can we afford to fund it? Now, when I, just do basic math, if you have six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand ridership, a simple increase of fifteen cents is another hundred thousand dollars. That covers this and it gives, it gives the other cities that partake in this a little savings.
The FTA formula on fares, you do not get to use fare box, is local match. Take your operating cost, you reduce the local match and FTA funds half of the remaining, only half. So you do not realize all, a hundred percent of a fare box.
What percentage do you realize? What percentage would you realize?
Instead of a hundred?
We're there then. Fifteen percent? A 15% increase puts us there. A 15% increase puts us there.
Yeah, but it only puts us there because we're not paying our fair share based on the funding formula the gentleman has to follow. Okay, that being the case, and he said it from a PR point of view, if, well, if you want to raise everybody's rates, that's great. If that's what we end up doing as, as a council, that's fine, but the fact of the matter is, if we, in my opinion, would do the right thing under these circumstances, not only for CTA, but also for the library, then we're, we are being fair, and they're, our dealings with them, and they with us. Other communities, and we're all, we're not like other communities, and they're not like us, but they manage to make these two entities a priority in their budgeting process. Every year, just about every year I've been on here, I, I think there was an increase a couple of years ago, and then it was cut back. No, I don't hear of anybody saying, geez, you don't have to give us as much money this year, we've cut our expenses, it's, it's cheaper to operate. It ain't happening. The only good news is probably that fuel costs hadn't gone up, but the fact of the matter is, the man's got a formula. He plugs in every, every city's, every municipality's numbers, it spits out a figure, there's you go, that's your fair share. There you go, that's your fair share. So everybody else manages to pay their fair share, I believe I heard you say that we're, 45,000 is us paying our fair share, so.
I, I do have another-
I'm gonna, let me, let me acknowledge Councilman Gines.
It's on, there you go.
There you go.
Yep, you know, it should be.
There's on, oh, there we go. I respect what Dr. Tisdale's saying, but it seems like we, we found ourselves in a workshop.
Yeah.
And, and like I said, I thought it was a little fast, that's what I said at the beginning. And I thought it was appropriate to table this and have a workshop on it, so we can discuss this issue. Because Dr. Tisdale did say, yeah, the man has a formula. I agree with it, but we would like that formula, too. Because at the end of the day, we're responsible for the taxpayers' dollars, and we need to understand with that formula how it's gonna be laid out. I, right now, I don't understand it. And, and, and like I said, based on some of the things that I've seen, I would like to see a little bit more service out of what we're given. I think we can get a little bit more out of it, that's just my personal opinion. So at this point, to keep from going through this workshop we're already in, I think we need to table it. And I'll be happy to set a motion to table this until we can discuss it further.
There's a motion on the board to table consent agenda item A, is there a second?
With all due respect, we, we are in discussion, and, and I, if, if you don't mind, because while I got him here, and I, I do want to ask this, the fuel cost, and we may get into this in a workshop, too. The fuel cost savings that you've had the last six months, five months, whatever it is, does that go into your reserves, and then you pay the deficit out of your reserves? Where does the savings, because that's budgeted, you had a budget for fuel cost, and they're lower than expected, so where does that savings-
Budgeted for a lower fuel cost. It's built into the budget, lower fuel costs, going into the fiscal year, fuel has been low for a while.
All right, but you testified last time I asked you about fuel costs, and you told me fuel costs were lower than expected.
They're, they're a little bit lower, and, yes, we did talk about this last time.
That's right.
Fuel, fuel cost as a percentage of our overall operating cost is very small.
That's what he said last time.
But whatever the impact is, my question is, does that savings go into reserves? They just show up in reserves, that's where the, the, if you don't incur the cost?
It's the same thing, Mr. Glavine, if fuel goes up and it spikes, we don't come back and ask for it.
I, I get it, but they, historically, they've been low, you know, Trump has done that for you, so.
I, I, I can't tell you, I can't sit here and tell you off the top of my head where we are on fuel in relation to what we budgeting on.
Okay. I, that's- And, and again, those unanswered questions, I, I'd-
The Gines, we, we give you, we give you the formula every year, when I come into the budget workshop. I give you all that information, I come in front of you, answer any questions you have, I'm here.
So, so that's why we're here, and, and I'm gonna go back to Mr. Gines calling for tabling it, because we have these unanswered questions. We have a formula, of course, too, that we, we have to adhere to, so I, I'm not saying I don't support the increase, or the allocation, but apparently, I think we got a lot of questions that are unanswered.
Councilman Barrett?
I think this is where we're at, I think either we have to table this today, or there's not enough votes to pass it. And so, so I, I know you say you have to have a vote, but it looks like, just counting noses here from people's discussion, that that's our two options. Either we can vote on it, and it looks like it's probably not gonna pass, or we can table it and come back and, and do this quickly, and have some type of workshop, and try to get through this.
I, I would say several things. Came in for the budget, been here two or three times now since then, we're having the same conversation now that we had last time. Same exact information. We funded your shortfall all this fiscal year, so what you're asking me to do now is risk coming into another workshop and talk about the same thing. At the risk of not having any funding, and us continuing to fund the shortfall. And we were first asked to come back in March, and then we were asked to come back in January, and now it's March. And so, I'm sitting here without a high degree of confidence, coming out of a workshop, you're gonna, your vote's not gonna be any different than it is right now, so. You know, my board is, is really looking for a vote tonight.
Well, it's unfortunate, Mr. Mike Leonard, and Mr. Mayor, if we move forward with a motion, if the motion to table moves forward, can we get to, can we get a spreadsheet showing us where we're at, our actuals and our projections, just so we can get a good basis of where we are with regard to value? Thank you, I think that will give us a better ability of, to understand where we're at, Kevin. I get that you've been here and you've asked a couple of times, and, and I'm sorry that we've wasted your time a, a few times to get more money from us, but I do need to make sure that we handle our budget, just like you have to make sure you handle your budget. So if you will, if you will be gracious enough to honor us with your presence one more time, allow us to look at our budget and see where we're at, see what our actual projections really are for this year and where we're at, so we can make a more informed decision on who to give money and how to spend money. I would appreciate that. Can we do it one more time?
Tuesday workshop?
If you're gonna come back to a workshop, I would just say-
Tuesday?
Absolutely not.
When's it gonna be?
We cannot do it Tuesday.
Okay, whatever day you set, President.
Wednesday, maybe? Say it about 7:00 o'clock?
A comment, please.
Paul Tisdale?
Yeah, I have a comment, and here we are, we're, we're kicking the can down the road again. That, that's all we're doing. We've discussed this, I mean, we have this general conversation every year, as Mr. Coggins has noted. He's put out what the, what the cost would be to keep this route going, it's not changed. We are answering the same questions. It's sad that it's taken this long to get to this point where we say, well, give us a little more time. And I'm curious to know how much time that would be. In the meantime, keep that route running. Now, I don't, I, I don't know what CTA or the executive director and their board's gonna do, but if I was the executive director, if it was me, or I was on the board, I'd almost think I was to, I was being taken for being a sucker. Here I am financing all of this, because the city won't, A, won't pay their fair share, but B, won't make a decision. That's, that's all I'll say, thank you.
All right, well, I will, do we have a second on the motion? I have a second by Dixie Newman. Was there a second on the motion to table?
No.
Do we have a second? No, I would say that Paul, just in a quick rebuttal, huh? Yes, a second. He moved, Felix Gines moved to table it, or, you know, there are more dynamics, we're not kicking down the road. I asked for specific information, because I want to make sure that we're making an informed decision. We all know that you are the first person to spend more of everybody's money and want to raise taxes, but I am not on board with that policy, and so I want to make sure that we are responsible on how we handle business in Biloxi.
Thank you, that's, that's good politics, Robert.
It's not politics.
It is politics.
The one that says, raise the mills, every time we talk about something.
It is, it's investing in our city, and the fact of the matter is, now, you, you've, you've gone off on a tangent, and I appreciate that. But the fact of the matter is, if we had to put up with the casino saying, we know we're supposed to get this money, or the state, we know, let's take the Secretary of State. We're supposed to be getting, at, at one point, we're supposed to be getting a check from the Secretary of State, we didn't get it for three months, six months. No, make that a year, no, I think it was a year and a half, it was almost two years. So, I mean, here we are, trying to tool along without revenue we're entitled to. Well, this man's not entitled to revenue, he would be if we made a decision. We've put off this decision now for almost six months.
Paul, what's your deci-, so, we're gonna vote this down?
That's all right, if you voted down, you voted it down.
I get that, I, I wasn't finished.
Let's go for a vote, I'm ready. Call for the question.
Well, the question isn't prepared yet, we still have discussion. Mr. Coggins, if this is voted down, will you, will you be providing us with an invoice for the prior year, for the prior portion of this year?
We would go into a 30-day public comment period for eliminating the four days of service. We, we can't continue to operate services.
My question was, would you provide us with an invoice for the charges? The Honorable Tisdale suggested that you've been funding this, and you're entitled to, to compensation. Would you provide us with an invoice for this portion of the year that you've been paying for services? Thank you.
How much would that be, an estimate off the top of your head?
It's 45,000 divided by 12 times 5.
And I would like to say this.
$45,000 a year is a shortage, you annualize that, divided by 12, I'm not that good in my head, I'm addicted to calculators.
About 20,000.
So, ho, ho, I, I have a question. So, so your question was, if this is voted down, will CTA bill us for the five months they've been paying this?
No, for the five months that they've been providing service, but they allege that we obviously didn't pay. And I don't know if there's an inducement argument, I don't know if, if there's anything there, I just wanted to know the simple question.
Yeah, I, I don't know the legal terms, but-
See, and, and I've heard, I've heard a, a few comments, and we've been jammed up before. And, and, and I haven't forgotten that, and that's why I wanted to table it. So, most of the council that's here now understand what, what, what has happened in the past, and we're looking into the future, and we just want to cross our Ts and dot Is, that's all I'm asking, before I make any decision.
I, I'll second, I'm a, Mr. Gines, you still have your motion to table?
My motion's still out there.
And is that contingent on a workshop?
Workshop, to understand what, to get a little more-
All right, I'll, I'll second the motion to table, contingent on a workshop, to be scheduled as soon as possible, so we can get the information, make a decision, if you have to get the ball rolling in that 30-day public, you know, uh, uh, comment section or whatever, then you'll have to take whatever action you do, need to. We all want to work in the best interest of the services that we can provide, but we don't have the votes here tonight, and I, I would certainly support Mr. Gines' motion to table, contingent on a workshop.
And Mr. Coggins, it, it's not that we don't appreciate what CTA does for our community, I simply want some more information to, to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our community as well. And so that's all, I've asked him to provide me with the, with the balance sheets, to give us an understanding of where we're at financially. When you, when we asked you to come back at this portion of the year, it was to, it was to find out where we were financially. And so that's my only request, is that you, you work with us, if you need to start that 30-day period, I understand that. Hopefully, we'll get this resolved, and we'll get the funding for you. I can't promise you that, but based off what the mayor says, he's optimistic. Call for the question on the motion to table, all in favor? It passes 6, 6-1, Tisdale opposed.
So, if you go into a 30-day, if you go into a 30-day-
They're not, he said that was tabled, only if we voted it down, so we're gonna- No, no, you said you tabled it, your, your people. It's not what you, never mind. Yeah, I think we are, I think we're talking about-
Let's say you do go into a 30-day deal, we end up having our workshop-
We should have a resolution within 30 days.
And with, and, and, and we go into our workshop, and we decide to, to fund this, you can terminate that 30-day, whatever you've set up.
Well, we want to set this a date, so we can get this done immediately, if the, if the administration can get us the balance sheet, bites them all morning, we should be able to do this immediately, with the exception of next Tuesday, so maybe Wednesday.
Could I say something real quick? I'll give you all the numbers real quick, right now, it's $18,750. You table it for another month, it's 22,500, you don't give me 45,000, I'll point around with it. Simple, this math.
That's not the numbers we're talking about.
That's what you're doing.
No, that's something you're, no, you're-
You do another month, it's 22,500, you're gonna bill you. You're not, you're not paying attention.
It's, it's already been tabled. We, we are paying attention.
I didn't vote for the table.
You-
I didn't, I just want to tell you.
Put Lawrence and Tisdale opposed.
He wants to either tell you no or yeah, that's what he wanted you to listen. And he goes back to his board and tells them one way or the other. Like, you hammer me down, he talked for 40 minutes, you didn't do nothing.
We've already voted, you're out of order.
No, I'm not, I was just telling you the numbers, y'all not paying attention to the numbers.
Let's set a date for this. Where, where's the board at? We're gonna do it prior to the next council meeting?
Either way.
You want us-
How about this Friday? 1:30 in the afternoon.
It's on you, President.
They, that, I don't have a problem with that. No, will we be taking action? I feel like if we, if we set it for before the next meeting, we can take action that meeting as well, so we can set this on that meeting, discuss it prior to the meeting. But, let's do it for the Tuesday before that meeting. Let's keep our, let's keep our program in, you know, we're 17th. We meet at 1:30, how much, 1 o'clock, I think we can handle this in an- Well, we're, we're asking, how much time do you want, assuming?
I'd say 10 o'clock.
Look at it, about 10, can you do 10?
When, when are y'all doing this?
Because we're gonna talk about it for an hour.
What are you supposed to be doing this? Tuesday. I think you're saying by then, you'll have the budget-
Let's do it by, let's do it at noon, Gary, let's have the workshop at noon, and then go into the council meeting at 1:30, which gives us an hour and a half.
You do it at 1:30, like you do all the meetings on Tuesday. That's what you do, 1:30 on Tuesday, just like all the meetings.
Are we having a parade out here?
No, they eating.
What time's the parade?
They coming in at 12? Coming in at 1:30?
1?
Eat at 11. Did you have anything else on the council agenda, George?
Say again?
Do you have anything else on the council agenda you wanted to discuss?
No, we're just wasting an hour, something, absolutely nothing. I don't have anything else, no.
No? Mr. Gines, do you have anything? Councilwoman Newman? Paul Tisdale, Councilwoman?
Just one question, I want to be sure I understand, forgive me. So we're looking at a council workshop on Tuesday, March 17th, at noon, to discuss CTA funding.
Correct.
Thank you. God bless me, I'm done.
Good.
Councilman Glavine?
Good.
Councilman Barrett? I have nothing on the council agenda. All in favor of the consent agenda? Consent agenda passes unanimously, are there any exceptions? We'll move on to the routine agenda. We'll move on to the routine agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Paul Tisdale, seconded by Felix Guines. Discussion?
Uh, Walter, who, who's ever left? We got any money? What we did?
Mr. McEwen, if you would, state your name for the record, please.
No, no. So, uh, the last monies that we got in was a week or so ago. We got in over a million dollars. Before that, we got 2.4, something like that, for a total of 3.4 during the month of, uh, of February.
And, uh, let, let me, let me jump out there too. You paid 2.7 on the note too, didn't you?
Yes, we did. We paid 2.751.
We're done with that note that...
The note is paid off. So, uh, that's a good thing. So anyway, uh, and we, we have some money coming. I'm gonna let Walt address that. 630,000 coming. It's in the pipeline.
Good. That's some good work the last couple of weeks then. It's a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. McEwen. Are there any more questions on the routine agenda? All in favor? Routine agenda carries unanimously. We do have a study agenda. Do we have a motion on the study agenda?
I moved it.
Moved by Councilman Lawrence, seconded by Felix Guines. Discussion?
Now, I just, sending that back to the planning commission to look at, uh, to me, the thing we need to look at the apartments being affected by the short-term rentals. That's the key we're looking at. To have a recommendation from them. That's all that's about.
Any other discussion on the study agenda? All in favor? Study agenda passes unanimously.
I'll make that motion to recess.
I have a motion to recess by Paul Tisdale, seconded by Felix Guines. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We are hereby recessed.